Meeting of the Excise Board of Oklahoma County to order. Today is Thursday, October the ninth, twenty twenty five. It is nine thirty A M. We have a full house, Mr. Brett Towne.
President.
Ms. Teresa Sellers.
President.
And I'm Eleanor Thompson. Notice that this meeting properly was posted on September twenty six, twenty twenty five. We have a long agenda today. Twenty-two minus one items. The first item is discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty-one nine four. It is the estimate of needs for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty-six and financial statements for the fiscal year which ended June thirty, twenty twenty five, which includes appropriations and certified levies for Hickory Hills Fire Protection District. Their general fund in the amount of ninety-seven thousand ninety-six dollars with a levy of seven point five three mils. This item is requested by the County Finance Department, Office of the County Clerk.
If there's no question or comments, I move approval of item number one.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item two, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty five dash three-two-two-seven. This is the estimate of needs for fiscal year twenty twenty five dash twenty-six and financial statements for the fiscal year which ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, which includes appropriations and certified levies for the City of Nichols Hills Sinking Fund in the amount of six million eight hundred eighty-one thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars with a levy of thirty-three point oh-four mils. This item is requested by the County Finance Department, Office of the County Clerk.
I'd like to move approval of item number two.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item three, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty five dash three-two-nine-four. It is the estimate of needs for the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty-six and financial statements for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty-five, which includes appropriations and certified levies for Deer Creek Fire Protection District. General fund in the amount of one billion eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a levy of ten mils. This item is requested by the County Finance Department, Office of the County Clerk.
I did have a question. Deer Creek was trying to get an ambulance district as well. Is that incorporated within the fire or is that separate? Have you all heard anything about that?
I heard they were gonna do that, but it would be a separate.
It would be separate.
It would be separated what if they, I believe it's gonna have to go to the vote.
Okay.
Other people, because they had to go to the vote to raise it. It used to be seven point.
Right.
Eight or nine.
Right.
That's what I thought as well.
But yeah, it would be a separate tax.
Okay. With that information, I move approval of item.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item four, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty five dash three-two-nine-seven. The estimate of needs for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty-six and financial statements for the fiscal year which ended June thirty, twenty twenty five and includes appropriations and certified levies for the City of Nakoma Park. Their general fund in the amount of four million eight hundred fifty-four thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars and thirty-nine cents with no mill levy. This item is requested by the County Finance Department, Office of the County Clerk.
If there's no questions or comments, I move approval of item number four.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item five, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty five dash three-three-nine-three. It is the estimate of needs for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty-six and financial statements for the fiscal year which ended June thirty, twenty-five, which includes appropriations and certified levies for the City of War Acres Sinking Fund in the amount of eight hundred sixty thousand thirty-three dollars with a levy of seven point seven-six mils. This item is requested by the County Finance Department, Office of the County Clerk.
Questions?
I don't know.
Okay. Move approval of item number five.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item six, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty five dash three-eight-zero-zero. The estimate of needs for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty-six and the financial statements for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, which includes appropriations and certified levies for the City of Dell City Sinking Fund in the amount of four hundred ninety-seven thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars with a levy of three point four-two mils. This item is requested by the County Finance Department, Office of the County Clerk.
Move approval of item six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item seven, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty five dash three-eight-six-four. The estimate of needs for the fiscal year. Like, I'm on seven, right? Okay, for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, which includes appropriations and certified levies for the City of the Village Sinking Fund in the amount of one million seven hundred thirty-six thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars with a levy of fourteen point seven-one mils. This item is requested by the County Finance Department, Office of the County Clerk.
Move approval of item number seven is presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item eight, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty four dash three-eight-six-five. It is the estimate of needs for the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty-six and the financial statements for the fiscal year which ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, which includes appropriations and certified levies for the City of Bethany Sinking Fund in the amount of one million nine hundred thirty-two thousand eight hundred twenty-eight dollars with a levy of fourteen point three-six mils. This item is requested by the County Finance Department, Office of the County Clerk.
Move approval of item number eight.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Bethany has its own school district. So item nine, discussion and possible action regarding.
Do we need to have a motion to strike?
Just strike.
I move that we strike number, item number nine from the agenda.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item ten, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty five dash three-eight-seven-two. It is the estimate of needs for the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty-six and financial statements for the fiscal year which ended June thirty, twenty twenty five, which includes appropriations and certified levies for Town of Smith Village. General fund in the amount of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred twenty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents with no mill levy. This item is requested by the County Finance Department, Office of the County Clerk.
I always ask this, but where's Town of Smith?
It's a little bitty place.
Two blocks.
It's two blocks. I drove through there. And it consisted of.
On the south side, right.
Nothing but homes. No, it's more like, like, it's just south of, of Bethany.
So by MacArthur.
Yes, yes. South of thirty-six, but it's just nothing but some houses.
Move approval of item number ten.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item eleven, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty five dash three-eight-oh-one. The estimate of needs for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty-six and financial statements for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, which includes appropriations and certified levies for Oklahoma County Metropolitan Library. General fund in the amount of one hundred and eight million two hundred thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars with a levy of five point two mils.
I did have a question. Is this the max mils that they can have or can they go more than five point two or less?
That's it.
Is it?
I'd have a question as well because I'm looking at this one. I saw that we approved one for Metropolitan Library Commission in July of this year for a hundred and two million without the levy. Is this the same?
I'm looking at their first page of their document. It says Metropolitan Library Commission estimate of needs, so.
So it is the same.
It is the same.
So they apparently had an increase then of another six million?
Well, that's the, the first one is a preliminary and this, this is still preliminary, but it's, it's, it's more, it's better data based upon the mileage level or the valuations that they finally ended up with.
Okay, so I'll just point out that when we approved it in October of last year, it was ninety-four mil.
Yeah.
So.
But what was the mil?
Still five point two.
That's, I think that's the.
So all that is, that's just the increase in valuation in that.
Right.
Okay.
Or the count.
All right.
I'd like to move approval of item number, it's presented.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item twelve, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty-seven-twenty-seven. The estimate needs for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty-six and financial statements for the fiscal year which ended June thirty, twenty twenty five, which includes appropriations and certified levies for the City County Health Department. General fund in the amount of eighty-one million two hundred ninety-eight thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars and twenty-one cents with a levy of two point five-nine mils. This item is requested by the County Finance Department, Office of the County Clerk.
The mils on this one stayed the same as well, but it's about a million more.
Move approval of item twelve is presented.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item thirteen. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty five dash three-eight-six-three. The estimate of needs for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty-six and financial statements for the fiscal year which ended June thirty, twenty twenty five, which includes appropriations and certified levies for the City of Oklahoma City Sinking Fund in the amount of one hundred and fifty million five hundred twenty-four thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars with a levy of one five point one-six mil, but.
I asked to receive the signed copy of the City of Oklahoma City estimate of needs presented today. The draft on this was waiting for their publications. So that's why they had draft on it versus what you have received today.
Okay, so it's the final.
Yes.
Signed.
Publication is on the backside.
Move to. Yeah, to the general records. Yes.
The only thing I'll say is, is I was going through the document, this, I was surprised at the amount of claims they have, twenty-eight million dollars in lawsuits and they go against the property taxes.
Pretty steep.
That is, that's almost two whole mils just for that, but I know many of those are just basically no fault and then the city investigates every one of them and, and some of those are court judgments. Some of them are judgments that are just put on because you don't have another recourse to go and pay those, so. It's appropriate, but it just seemed like a high amount.
That's about ten million and more than we approved last year.
The claims.
No, just in total. The sinking fund last year was a hundred and, almost a hundred and forty million. It's a hundred and fifty this year. And the sinking, the mils is actually, well, the hundred and twenty-nine-three last year is fifteen, sixteen this year.
That can only go, probably that is because of the, the claims against the city lawsuits. But anyway, that's just where we are in society nowadays. Move to approve item number thirteen is presented.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty five dash three-four-seven-seven. The sinking fund estimate of needs for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty-six. Sinking fund financial statements for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, which includes appropriations and certified levies for the City of Midwest City in the amount of three million seven hundred ninety-one thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars with a levy rate of eight point two eight mils. This item is requested by the County Finance Department, Office of the County Clerk.
This one looks good. It's about fifty thousand dollars last, last year or so.
Move to approve item number fourteen.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would you like me to read?
Yeah.
Okay. We're on item fifteen, correct?
Yes.
Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty-four-eight-seven. The estimate of needs for fiscal year twenty-five dash twenty-six and financial statements for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-five, which includes appropriations and certified levies for Oklahoma City Public Schools District Number I eighty-nine. General fund in the amount of four hundred and six million seven hundred and forty-one thousand dollars with a levy of thirty-five point nine-six mils. Building fund in the amount of thirty-three million four hundred and one thousand dollars with a levy of five point one-four mils. Child nutrition in the amount of thirty-four million eight hundred and twenty-three thousand with no mill levy. Sinking fund in the amount of seventy-six million thirteen thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents with a levy of twenty-four point three-nine mils. This item is requested by the County Finance Department, Office of the County Clerk.
This should be higher than last year, but did they approve a bond issue?
Yeah, it's quite big.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's about forty, maybe fifty thousand on the general fund. It's thirteen thousand more on the building and like about five thousand more on the child nutrition. The sinking fund, I didn't have a record of last year, so I don't know if that's just all new or.
No, that would be in place because they had some old bonds and the sinking fund is the debt service on those for interest and principal, so.
I may have just missed it. Okay.
There are motions?
So I'll make a motion to approve item number fifteen as stated.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number sixteen, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty-six-twenty. The estimate of needs for fiscal year twenty twenty five dash twenty-six and financial statements for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, which includes appropriations for E-School Virtual Charter Academy Z dash six. General fund in the amount of eight million two hundred and seventy-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-six cents with no mill levy. This item is requested by the County Finance Department, Office of the County Clerk.
Eight-two-seven-five. So this is a little bit more as well. It's almost two million more than last year.
And I think this.
No, actually, no, it's two million more than the, than the, what they asked for in the.
Yeah, this would be based upon just their student counts because they don't receive any mill levy support.
Yeah, they also need that. Okay, so I move to approve item number sixteen as stated.
Second.
A second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number seventeen, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty-two-nine-five. The estimate needs for fiscal year twenty twenty five dash twenty-six and the financial statements for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-five, which include appropriations for Harding Independence Charter School District E thirty. General fund in the amount of eleven million thirty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy cents with no mill levy and building fund in the amount of one million forty-five thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-nine cents with no mill levy. This item is requested by the County Finance Department, Office of the County Clerk. I did have a question on this. It says with no mill levy, so is Oklahoma City assuming all that millage on theirs and then they dish this money to the, to the charter schools within their attendance area?
Did you not see?
Did you see the City of Oklahoma City?
Oklahoma City Public Schools.
Because it's a charter Oklahoma City sponsor.
If you could find that out, because I think that, I just want to confirm that item. I think there's an agreement in place with Oklahoma City to do this with charter schools because at one time they, there are charter schools in Oklahoma, within the Oklahoma City attendance area receiving no building fund. And because they're, they're really not eligible to have ability to assess to them. So anyway, is there a, is there a motion?
I, I move to approve of item seventeen.
Second.
A second.
I'm, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Number eighteen, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty-six-fifty-three. The estimate of needs for the fiscal year twenty twenty five dash twenty-six and financial statements for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty five, which include appropriations and certified levies for Midwest City Dell City S D number fifty-two. General fund in the amount of twenty-seven million three hundred and thirty-seven thousand four hundred dollars with a levy of thirty-six point one-four mils. Building fund in the amount of three million nine hundred and three thousand twenty-two dollars with a levy of five point one-six mils. And sinking fund in the amount of twenty-two million two hundred and seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents with a levy of twenty-nine point four-three mils. This item is requested by the County Finance Department, Office of the County Clerk.
I have a question. Is, is this less than last year? Does that close the couples?
The general fund, it's a couple of million more. Building fund is pretty close to the same and sinking fund is pretty close to the same. Um, yeah. And the mils look all the same. Sinking is a little bit less.
School closures don't affect the budget very much. Remember they closed, made a big deal of it. Is, how many of the schools that closed?
They, it could. It's dependent upon two factors. One is the budgets, is the number of students they have and then how their millage or how their assessed valuation increased within their school district themselves. In the sinking fund, that would be they're paying off old debt. So the millage level to service the, the new, the debt after that's paid off could go down if they're not putting any new debt on. So that could go down. It's, it's like one of these roller coasters like this. Some school districts keep it constant and they go bonds every few years and then it's old comes off, new goes on. But in this case, it looks like they haven't done that recently.
Well, I move to approve of item number eighteen.
Second.
A second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Keep forgetting to do that. Item number nineteen, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty-four-eight-three. The estimate of needs for fiscal year twenty twenty five dash twenty-six and the financial statements for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-five, which include appropriations for Dove Virtual Charter Academy District Number Z dash seven. General fund in the amount of three million eight hundred and six thousand three hundred and ten dollars and forty-one cents with no mill levy. This item is requested by the, by the County Finance Department, Office of the County Clerk.
This one's about a million more than last year. Now, I'll, if there's no questions, I'll make a motion to approve item number nineteen as stated.
And I'll say.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number twenty, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty-four-eight-four. The estimate of needs for fiscal year twenty twenty five dash twenty-six and the financial statements for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-five, which include appropriations for Dove Charter School District Number G dash nine. General fund in the amount of forty-four million five hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Forty, forty-four million five hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and fourteen cents with no mill levy. This item requested by the County Finance Department, Office of the County Clerk.
I have a question on this one. What I showed that we approved last year, actually, we approved it earlier this year in May of twenty-five and then in May of twenty-four. It was called Dove Schools of Oklahoma City District Number G oh-oh-nine. I'm assuming it's the same? Yes, they had a like a, um, BBA. Okay. And so, but this is a little bit more. This twenty-seven million last year. And forty-four million this, so it's quite a bit more this year just as an FYI. I don't know if we know why.
Do you think the tax credit has, has any impact on that?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, that's.
Although they're not private schools, so they're, all they're receiving is per pupil.
Interesting. Well, I move for approval of item twenty.
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item twenty-one, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty-seven-oh-seven. Received with filing Metro Tech V T number twenty-two, amendment number one, school budget and financing plan for fiscal year twenty twenty five dash twenty-six. Total budget of appropriated funds, the amount of one hundred and five million one hundred and ninety-one thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars, which includes fifty-seven million seven hundred and ten thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars for the general fund. Twenty-nine million nine hundred and thirteen thousand eighty-seven dollars for the building fund. One million six hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars for the bond fund. Thirteen million five hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars for the sinking fund and two million three hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars for the financial aid fund. This item is requested by the County Finance Department, Office of the County Clerk.
So I do have what we did last year and earlier this year. It's actually quite a bit less than what we approved. It was fifty-seven million what we approved earlier this year and now they're asking twenty-nine on the general funds.
No.
Um, this looks pretty good.
Okay, I'll move for adoption, approval of item twenty-one.
Second.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number twenty-two, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty-seven-zero-eight. The estimate of needs for fiscal year twenty twenty five dash twenty-six and financial statements for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-five, which include appropriations and certified levies for Metro Technology V T twenty-two. General fund in the amount of twenty-nine million fifty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-two cents with a levy of ten point three mils. Building fund in the amount of sixteen million one hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-six cents with a levy of five point one-five mils. And sinking fund in the amount of nine million one hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-one cents with a levy of three point six-six mils. This item is requested by the County Finance Department, Office of the County Clerk.
What's the difference between this one and the one before that?
They amended their financial plan in twenty-one. This one is the estimate of needs.
Thank you.
And. And the mils.
Oh, it has, okay, it has the mils and the other one does not, but, but, so, but this is amending.
Their first budget they sent us.
The general. Okay, so this is what I was talking about, right, that twenty-nine mils?
Yes. Twenty-nine-five from twenty-nine-nine. Twenty-nine fifty-five.
Is there a motion?
I see, okay.
I move to, we adopt and approve item twenty-two as presented.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Hey, I have a question. We did not, uh, next time, I guess we'll approve multiple, uh, minutes. We didn't do minutes for the last eight. So this, next time we'll probably add more than one. Yes.
In the prior, definitely.
Right. Okay.
Uh, and just for record, we have approved all the city, especially outside of City of Oklahoma Park. Um, that's the one that we strict on number nine.
Right.
Um, because we don't have the signed estimates. They provided me the unsigned copy to hit the nine-thirty deadline for the submission.
To the clerk's office.
So what they're probably due for next Thursday?
Um, I talked to her this morning and she's anticipating to have those mailed out to me, so if not by next week, the week after for sure. But we're standing with all the others so far. You see, the drafts are already out there. They did good this year. I was on them.
Better.
Yes.
And our next meeting is next, for exercise is next Thursday.
Yes.
Okay, and there's tax roll on Monday.
Monday. And I may, I may call you Sunday.
Okay.
Me?
No, no.
So I, I can put you out the last meeting of this month. I, I did book my trip to Virginia, so I will not be here for that meeting. And did you want to talk about that letter now or you want to talk about, oh, the email that you sent us?
We can talk about it. Alright. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.